Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, January 16th. We are glad to have you with us this evening. As we normally do and get started, we will open just a minute with a moment of silence. We will remain standing for our pledge of allegiance in just a couple of seconds. We're waiting our attorney, Mr. Blair's on his way in and he'll be here in just a second. Let me do a couple of things just before we start with that. I would like to say some special thank yous to several people. One, to our Public Utilities Department, Public Works, for all of the things that they have been going through in this bitter cold. We have had water breaks and all kinds of things have happened and they have just done an outstanding job and we want to say thank you for out there in the middle of the night in freezing temperatures of under 10, 15 degrees some nights and they have repaired everything, gotten it back on in a timely manner and we just want to say thank you. We appreciate all that you do, all of our departments by the way on that, but Radford and Charles, especially you guys, I know they've been out on a number of different things and we appreciate all that you've done there. We would also like to say a special thank you and to, we had some promotions this morning in our Fire Department.
On cue.
On cue, yeah. We would like to say congratulations to Battalion Chief Scott Powell was promoted to Battalion Chief, to Captain Chris Jacobs who was promoted to Captain. As we lose our guys, there they go. Hope we get back soon. And to Lieutenant Keith Owens who was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant. We appreciate all you guys and what they do and we will tell them thank you and Chief appreciate that and working on it. In our Police Department, Lieutenant Jody Herman was promoted to, of course, the rank of Lieutenant by, announced by Police Chief Scott Brown and we want to congratulate Jody and appreciate his hard work. Captain, if you will, let him know that. We are really proud of all the guys and what they do and thank you for that. We will now then go to our moment of silence and if you will, please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. If you will, please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing we have tonight is a very, very, very special recognition. I'll tell you what, lived here all my life, played football, basketball, baseball, and I know we've had some other state championship teams and a lot of things, but today, tonight, we get to recognize the first state championship football team, 11-man football. I think I better make that known because there are some that argue there was an eight-man championship in Granite Falls and that's probably true, but tonight we have our first honoring of our state championship team from High Brighton High School, the North Carolina II AA double-A state champions. We're very proud of your young men, what you've done, how you've done it. You know, you not only won, but you also acted in a wonderful manner. You were great guys. You conducted yourselves in the best possible way and we can only be so proud of you and what you have done. I have a resolution that I would like to present to the team and I will ask Coach Lewis and Mr. Caldwell and you guys, Derek Reeves, the Athletic Director, if you will come forward. I'd like to read this to you and present it to you officially. And also, of course, we shot a picture with the sign a little while ago and we're very proud and I want to thank Charles Beck in our Public Works Department for putting that together. That will be placed as soon as we can get them worked out at all our city limits. Signs coming in on 321, that'll be Bonrock Side, Hickory Side, Morganton Boulevard Side, and Wilkesboro Side. All will have these new signs placed there to honor what you guys did in this year to be the state double-A champions. Christie's arguing we got to get something up for the West Caldwell Basketball Women's Team on that, but that was a couple of years ago. We'll think about that down the road. We'll think about that one, but we are proud of you. We're honored to be able to do that and I thank those guys for putting that together and those will go up and it's something we can all be proud of as we pass it coming in. And we'll look, make sure we don't leave any spot out that needs a special sign like that, but we wanted to have this ready for you to see tonight and we were really proud of that and looking forward to when those can go. But let me read this resolution and present it to you. Congratulating the High Brighton High School 2017 Football Team as the North Carolina High School Athletic Association's two double-A state champions, whereas High Brighton High School won the 2017 North Carolina High School Athletic Association's two double-A state championship by defeating East Duplin High School in the title game at Kenan Stadium in Chapel Hill by a score of 16 to 14. And whereas the High Brighton Panthers finished the 2017 season with a perfect record of 16 and 0, making this the first undefeated season in school history and also the first 11-man football state championship team in Caldwell County history. And whereas the High Brighton Panthers' outstanding athletic excellence resulted in their capturing the 2017 Western Regional Championship, Northwestern Foothills Conference Championship, and the Caldwell County Championship. And whereas head coach Clay Lewis and the entire coaching staff, along with the talented High Brighton Panthers, have set an outstanding example as leaders in the community and brought much pride to the City of Lenore and Caldwell County by their exceptional performance on the football field. Now therefore, I as Mayor of the City of Lenore, North Carolina, and on behalf of Lenore City Council and all the citizens do hereby give special honor and commendation to the 2017 High Brighton High School Panther Football Team for their tremendous talent, skill, hard work, and unity which resulted in their winning the North Carolina Athletic Association's two AA state championship and witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand and calls the seal of the City of Lenore to be affixed this the 16th day of January 2018. Congratulations. But you guys. Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the High Brighton Football Team, we would like to present the council and you with this commemoration plaque of the High Brighton High School two double-A state champions. We're here.
Thank you very much.
We would place this in an honored place in the city hall for everyone to see and enjoy. So thank you. Thank you very much for that. Coach, tell us a little bit about it. What all went on?
In three minutes or less.
Well, first of all, just like to thank y'all for having us here tonight. You know, it was an outstanding season for us at High Brighton and throughout the county. You know, just, you know, a lot of times, you know, you don't know what goes into, you know, assembling a football team and the work these kids put in. But you know, just kind of a recap of our season, I can remember last January, you know, we started working on the process. You know, it wasn't just to show up on game night and, you know, play games, but these kids have run, worked extremely hard in the off-season. In January, they started in the weight room, religiously working in there. Throughout the summer, lifting, running, practicing, and you know, throughout the season, these kids did what it took to, you know, accomplish what they did this year. So you know, a lot of, lot of hard work, a lot of dedication. Also, with that being said, I've got a tremendous coaching staff that, you know, also put in a lot of work throughout the season with, you know, we meet over the weekends, game plans, kids come in on Saturday morning, watch film, you know, just a lot that goes into it. So you know, the kids deserve everything that they get. Really a special group of kids, you know, that really deserves what happened to them this season. They earned it on the field, but you know, I would like to also say that these are fine young men. They're high-character kids, you know, and our motto at High Brighton is a faithful family football, you know, and I think these guys implemented that this season. You know, the experience at the state championship game was, you know, it was awesome, but it was a business trip for us. And you know, it's been a long time coming. I know we've been through a, we've been to that fourth round many, many times since I've been at High Brighton and we've never been able to break through and to be able to do that this season and also bring home a state championship, you know, it's just been a, just a tremendous experience for us. You know, and in closing, you know, one of the, I think one of the special moments, at least for me and I think most of these kids, was when we drove back from Chapel Hill and we came through town and the amount of support and amount of people there, not just from High Brighton, but you know, from Caldwell County in general, that was a very, you know, very, very outstanding thing for these kids to see and I think I was really impressed with and we appreciate that. And this championship's not just for High Brighton High School, it's for High Brighton, Caldwell, and everybody at Caldwell County, Lenore. Thank you.
I'm gonna recognize Mr. Caldwell in just a second. I would like to mention a couple of things. I would like to say special congratulations to Noah Haney who was named Conference Player of the Year, Charles Tesonari, did I say it right, Charles? Close enough? Who was named Defensive Player of the Year, and McKinley Witherspoon named Offensive Player of the Year. So High Brighton had it all covered well, I'll tell you that. In the state championship game, the most valuable player was Miles Simon and Miles caught the two TDs in that game. I tell you what, that was fantastic. Miles also participated in the Shrine Bowl game, which North Carolina blitzed South Carolina in that game. Way to go, guys, on that one. And our Defensive Player of the Game was Charles Tesonari and Offensive Player of the Game, Noah Haney, in the state championship game. That's a, that's great tribute to those guys and their hard work during the year. I will say one other thing, the, especially the victory over Shelby was especially gratifying, you guys. You know that Shelby and Lenore and this area have had a long rivalry and I've lost to them many times. I actually played against them several times, but to beat them, I have a lot of friends in Shelby who coach over there, so this was great. I'll tell you what. So that was like winning the state championship twice. You get to beat Shelby and then win it again. So that was fantastic. But Mr. Caldwell, congratulations to you, sir.
I didn't do a thing.
I'll tell you what, this is a fine gentleman. He is a fine principal in our community. Well-respected and we thank you for all that you do for our children every day.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're there.
Thank you. I just wanted to say this, that I don't know that enough credit goes to our coaching staff. They deferred all of the, to the players, which of course, we should, but as a principal, you see things a little bit differently. And the one question that people ask me all the time about this group of kids is, so what are they really like? You know, they haven't changed one bit. They won a state championship. They go to class every day. It doesn't matter who stops them in the hall to have a conversation with them. It doesn't matter if it's the ninth grade freshman who is the shyest kid in the school or a senior who's in the band. It doesn't matter. They literally treat every one of their peers as though they're one of them. And that's, humility is the word that comes to mind when I think of this group of kids. They're a very, very humble group of guys. They really are. And it has never gone to their heads. It never has. And that is so impressive for someone like an adult who sometimes it goes the other way. None of the credit goes to the parents, the faculty, the staff, but the coaches. They spend a lot of time with this coaching staff who mow grass in the summer, they fix irrigation problems, they line the field, they do a lot of things behind the scenes that we don't ever, ever see them do. So I guess on behalf of a grateful high school and a grateful principal, and to the City of Lenore and to everyone who has supported High Brighton, thank you for allowing our kids to represent High Brighton in a light that quite frankly, I will never forget ever. Humility is the word and that is what I will remember most about this team. We love you guys because you've never changed.
Thank you very much for being with us. We, again, thank you for what you've done. Parents, thank you for sharing your children with us in this special way. You know, guys, you've got a memory that will last forever. I know we got a championship ring drive going on and I know there's going to be some things coming up for that. If you'd like to, anybody would like to give to that, it's certainly open to that. They would love to have any contributions and help that they can in that way to help get these guys something special that they can keep forever in their careers. You know, how many times do you get a chance to win a state championship? It doesn't happen many times, does it? So this is something special. So support them in every way you can, if you can. I know there's a barbecue coming up soon at...
It's at Perks.
Perks, thank you. Perk Cafe.
Yeah, 26 and 27.
26 and 27. So if you'd like to be a part of that, please come out and eat some good barbecue and purchase and some, a chance to be a part of that. So again, thank you very much for being with us and thank you guys for all you do for our children. We really appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to a very special recognition tonight and I'm gonna ask Battalion Chief Jimmy Farr if he would come up and join us. And Chief Briscoe? If you guys, you don't have to stay. If you need to go, it's fine. We'd love to have you, but if you, I know you've got other things to do. So if you want to do that now, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have a very special recognition and, you know, these are always bittersweet. You know, I've had the pleasure and all of us have to work with and know Chief Farr for a long time. Fine gentleman in this community, not only as a firefighter, but just as a great man, family man. I know loves this community and it just serves it in so many ways. And after so many years of service, I believe it's going to be about 29. Is that, did I read that right? And we want to say thank you for all your service and what you meant to this community. No, you're not going anywhere too far, but we will miss you, you know, every day of being a part of this. But thank you for being there every day and risking your life to do the right thing for all of us in this community. You protected us. You came out and helped us when we needed it and many times even, sometimes getting birds out of houses or whatever you had to do. You guys do a great job of that. We always can depend on our firemen and our Fire Department to be there whenever we need them. But I'm gonna present this resolution and read it for you. It's a resolution, City of Lenore honoring James Terry Jimmy Farr Jr. Whereas James Terry Jimmy Farr Jr. began his career as a firefighter with the Lenore Fire Department on March 25th, 1989. He was promoted to Second Lieutenant December 28th, 2000. Lieutenant on October the 4th, 2001, and Captain on June 5th, 2006, and Battalion Chief on June 9th, 2013. Whereas Jimmy Farr has announced his retirement effective January 1st, 2018, ending 29 years of exemplary service to the citizens of Lenore and Caldwell County. And whereas during his tenure of dedicated service, Jimmy Farr has served with great confidence and always contributed positively to the professional development of those around him. And whereas during all of his endeavors, both in and outside the Fire Department, Jimmy Farr has brought honor and respect to himself and the City of Lenore by his actions and his fair treatment of all persons. Now therefore, be it resolved that I as Mayor and on behalf of Lenore City Council and all citizens do hereby wish the very best for Jimmy in his retirement and commend him for the example he has set as a dedicated public servant. To be it further resolved that we extend our sincere appreciation and deep gratitude for his faithful and outstanding service which has contributed to the betterment of our city. Jimmy, congratulations.
Chief Farr?
Chief Hare?
Yeah, just made my day. Thank you so much. One of the things we like to do when our gentlemen and ladies retire is to put together a shadow box and it contains, the first thing is his shield with his number that he had while he served with the City of Lenore. We obviously have our two coins, our coins in there, the credentials that he earned during his tenure at the city, and finally, the badge that he last wore, his last shift. And what it says is presented to Battalion Chief Jimmy Farr for faithful and dedicated service, March 1989, January 2018.
Chief Briscoe?
I'll get that one right. All right, take just a minute, if I could. Chief Farr, as a supervisor, as a manager, and Mr. Hildebrand will appreciate this, you surround yourself with good people and you surround yourself with people that do good things. Chief Farr kinda is the representation of what Benjamin Franklin said about the fire service. He was the father of the United States Fire Service, Chief Franklin was. And he said that we form a very special bond and relationship with our citizens and our, in our communities. And you have to be able to put yourself in between whatever the danger is and your citizens. And Chief Farr has always done that. The word that describes him probably the best is Chief Farr is a servant. He is truly a servant of the City of Lenore. He has looked after your citizens very well and he has represented you very well. And for that, on behalf of the City of Lenore, we have the Go Watch with the patch in the center that says Jimmy Farr, 22 years service, 399, or 89, sorry about that, Chief, to 118.
Chief Briscoe, Chief Briscoe, you failed to mention an NC State fan. That's critical to put in there. Mr. Whittington, I want to put...
It's been a rough... It's been a rough 29 years for him.
I'd just like to say, I think the City Council, the Mayor, Chief Farr, Chief Briscoe, friends and family, Michelle, my youngest daughter in the back, one at college and one at dance tonight. But you know, I don't, a lot of people don't realize how hard it is on a family when you're pulling a 24-hour shift and you're away and the kids are at home sick and, and you know, the wife's having to do a lot of things that she probably shouldn't have to do. But thank you, Michelle, Jenna, the family. The firefighters are coming back in. This is a team, a team job. This is not an individual job. It's, it takes every one of those walking through that back door to make a job happen. So because of them, I can stand here today without injury after 29 years and just wish the same for the rest of them. And I do thank you and the city and what you did for me and I appreciate it.
Let's shoot a picture. You guys, if you will, come up and counsel us. Come down and shoot a picture with Chief Farr on this special night.
Can't see Chief in the, right there, yeah. Go this way. Can't see Chief in the, right there, yeah. Go this way. Okay. All right, everybody. One, two, three, cheese.
Okay, we'll go back to our meeting. Thank you, everyone that was with us for those special presentations. We're very honored to honor our High Brighton Championship Team and of course, Chief Farr for 29 years of wonderful service to our city. We're very proud of him. We'll move on. We do not have any matters scheduled for a public hearing this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items consisting of minutes from our City Council Meeting of Tuesday, December the 5th, 2017. Item B is the FY 2017-2018 Annual Audit Contract, City of Lenore. This is for approval of the annual audit contract for the City of Lenore in the amount of $30,105 as submitted by S. Eric Bowman, P.A. Item C is the final offer to purchase real property. This is at 518 Hill Street. This is to purchase real property by resolution in the amount of $5,000 following the submission of all upset bids and is submitted by the Pride of Caldwell Lodge Number 713 to purchase a city-owned property located at 518 Hill Street. That's North Carolina PIN Number 274-958-5205. That's the West End Community Center. The legal notice was published in the news topic on Friday, December 8th, and the city did not receive any upset bids. The Pride...
We appreciate what you gentlemen are doing with the lodge and taking that over. I think that's gonna be a great improvement in the community and just to be able to have that building in use and there and a lot of things going on there is really great. So we appreciate that. Thank you for, yes, sir. Thank you for coming. We'll move on then to requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone that would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. Yes, sir. We know you, but if you'll give us your name and address, we would appreciate it for the records.
Good evening and I appreciate the opportunity to stand before this council on this evening. First, I'd like to say thank you for all the things that you've done for us and thank you for allowing us to receive the email on the things in J.E. Broihill. Last time I stood before you, I was asking questions about this park and it's good to know that you're moving forward. It's good to know that you've done a lot of demolition as well as some new things going up. But do you have an approximate date? A lot of the citizens are asking approximately, when would this park be completed? I believe there are some people wanting to do some things there.
Okay.
And they were trying to work on plans.
All right, I'm gonna ask our Recreation Director, Mr. Kenny Story, to come forward and just give us an update on that and the date and timelines and things as they're projected.
Good to see you, Reverend. Our timeline on this, hopefully we're looking May to June, hopefully, on that. Some things that, the park is open to the public as of now for people to use. We still have the restrooms to build. We have some sidewalk work. The basketball court, as soon as the weather breaks, will be, we've already got the bid on to pave that. The weather's just been so bad that cold weather on that. So we're looking at a projection date, May to June, hopefully maybe sooner if we can get the work done. That's the bottom line. But the big reason has been the weather on most of it and dealing with the federal grant. There's laws that we have to abide by through that and make sure we get the right people in there to do the work. So that's the timeline on that.
One other thing, I'd like to thank the city of Lenore for all of the support that you've shown during the Martin Luther King Weekend. You know, it was really great. The turnout was fantastic. But what touched my heart was to see so many of you out there during the course of the week showing up, supporting this area of the city. It made my heart happy and I think a lot of others as well. So I wanted to take this time. So often we complain, but tonight I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. We would like to say thanks to the Recreation Department, Lester, and all your staff, Kenny and everyone, for all that you put together for the weekend. I know it was a busy weekend. The service on Saturday and the breakfast was great. Everybody thoroughly enjoyed that. There was a service on Sunday there and then of course Monday, Chrissy and Ike, I'm gonna let you guys talk about, I know you might want to in a little bit on that, but that was also done very well and we appreciate all the work that was put into it. So thank you again on that. And there's some Black History Month events coming up. We'll maybe even discuss that in a few minutes as we move through our agenda. Anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Yes, sir?
Pass the mic, Mr. Sloane. Just up, you know, a lot of rumors going around. I'm just wanting to know about Rankin Street. We're still hearing that the city is thinking about making it a one-way, one-way street.
I don't know of anything.
I haven't heard anything about it.
No, I don't, we don't, there's no, there's no...
It hasn't come before this board.
Do what?
It hasn't come before this board.
No. Hasn't, no, it's not a recommendation or anything from any of our staff or anything. So as far as I know, nothing, nothing's changing with it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Reverend Sloane. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Good to see you always, Mr. Sturgis. Thank you for being with us. Seeing no one, it was coming forward. We will then move on to reports. We do not have any reports of our boards and commissions. We'll move on then to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, Council, several items for your information tonight. The Planning Board will meet on Monday, January 22nd at 5:30 p.m. in East Chambers. The Committee of the Whole will meet on Tuesday, January 23rd at 8:30 a.m. at City Hall, third floor. The Lenora Tourism Development Authority will meet on Thursday, January 25th at 3:00 p.m., City Hall, third floor. The Foothills Regional Airport will meet on Wednesday, January 31st at noon at the airport. And the City Council Planning Retreat will be held on Friday, February 23rd from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and that will be held at the Blue Ridge Electric Membership Corporation Community Meeting Room and that's located at 1216 Blowing Rock Boulevard. We have several items tonight for your consideration. One is the construction bid award for the Bernhardt Water Treatment Plant. This project consists of construction of two new filters, also a mechanical pretreatment facility and related improvements to piping valves, telemetry. The bids were very competitive. The low bidder was Brushy Mountain Builders of Lenore. They were the lowest responsible bidder for that project in the amount of $8,337,000. The bid tab is in your packet. They also suggest that we can establish a 10% contingency fund for that project. And also the engineers have asked that you go back and delegate change orders to me and I report back at the next meeting. Due to the timeline of the project, 15 months is gonna be making it tight schedule and they really want it done in 12 months, but we're gonna try to make sure we get it done in 15.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation from the city manager and staff concerning the construction bid award. That would be to Brushy Mountain Builders and you heard the amount of $8,337,000 and that we make, the city manager let them, that would come to you with the change orders and you were reporting to us with it on that. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Councilmember Rohr to approve the construction bid award as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously.
Your next item is a resolution to accept a loan offered from the state for state assistance regarding the design and construction of a new bio solids handling facility at the wastewater plant. The state would offer a $6.6 million over a term of 1.53% interest and that's 20 years for that. The closing fee for that loan is $132,000. We've been discussing this project for, I guess, probably the last two years. We're getting closer, I think. I don't think a decision's been made on the technology we're gonna use yet, but that process is underway. But we have to go back and lock up that loan in the coming days.
Okay. There's a recommendation again on the authorizing resolution for Laurel Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is the bio solids handling facility and they're recommending approval of the resolution to authorize the acceptance of the state loan grant assistance in the amount of $6,600,000 at an interest rate of 1.53%. Any discussion?
Since this is a state grant and we're getting it below market rates due to benefit from the state government, I'm opposed to these things. So I assume it'll pass, but I'm opposed.
Okay.
I hope I've convinced all of the rest of you to go along with me and oppose this.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Thomas to approve the authorizing resolution as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously.
Your next item is a resolution to accept a loan offered from the state for state assistance regarding the design and construction of a new bio solids handling facility at the wastewater plant. The state would offer a $6.6 million over a term of 1.53% interest and that's 20 years for that. The closing fee for that loan is $132,000. We've been discussing this project for, I guess, probably the last two years. We're getting closer, I think. I don't think a decision's been made on the technology we're gonna use yet, but that process is underway. But we have to go back and lock up that loan in the coming days.
Okay. There's a recommendation again on the authorizing resolution for Laurel Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is the bio solids handling facility and they're recommending approval of the resolution to authorize the acceptance of the state loan grant assistance in the amount of $6,600,000 at an interest rate of 1.53%. Any discussion?
Since this is a state grant and we're getting it below market rates due to benefit from the state government, I'm opposed to these things. So I assume it'll pass, but I'm opposed.
Okay.
I hope I've convinced all of the rest of you to go along with me and oppose this.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Thomas to approve the authorizing resolution as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries 5-1. We're one short tonight, yeah. Okay.
Your next item tonight is a consideration of a new water sales agreement between the city of Lenore and the Bait and Water Corporation. We had agreement with Bait and since 1976, the terms expired. The agreement before you will establish a base amount of 500,000 gallons per day. It will run till January 15th of 2033. It's my understanding that the Bait and Water Corporation approved this today at noon at their board meeting.
Okay, you heard the recognition, recommendation.
All the above.
All the above from the, for the water sales agreement with the Bait and Water Corporation. Approval of this water sales agreement between the Bait and Water Corporation and the city of Lenore. Any other discussion? Make a motion, we approve. Councilmember Pro Tim Willis makes a motion to approve this water sales agreement. No discussion? Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously.
The next item you had before you is an order of abatement for 315 Bell Street. City staff recommends approval of the order of abatement for the property located at 315 Bell Street. That's NC PIN 274-464713, parcel ID 061623. And directing staff to abate the minimum housing violations by demolishing the structure at the property. This property's number six on the city's minimum housing priority list. This structure suffered a fire, I think, over a year ago, maybe two, four years ago. We're getting a lot of neighbor complaints on this one, so we would like to get this moved on.
Okay, you heard the recommendation from the staff, the city manager, that for an order of abatement for 315 Bell Street for the removal of this, that this is carried out and you have all the information on that. Any questions from anybody on the council? Discussion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Willis that we approve the order of abatement as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously.
The next item you had before you is an order of abatement for 315 Bell Street. City staff recommends approval of the order of abatement for the property located at 315 Bell Street. That's NC PIN 274-464713, parcel ID 061623. And directing staff to abate the minimum housing violations by demolishing the structure at the property. This property's number six on the city's minimum housing priority list. This structure suffered a fire, I think, over a year ago, maybe two, four years ago. We're getting a lot of neighbor complaints on this one, so we would like to get this moved on.
Okay, you heard the recommendation from the staff, the city manager, that for an order of abatement for 315 Bell Street for the removal of this, that this is carried out and you have all the information on that. Any questions from anybody on the council? Discussion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Willis that we approve the order of abatement as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one additional item that we added tonight. With the approval of the award of the bid for the water treatment plant and also the engineering agreement, we have a capital project ordinance in the amount of $10,500,000 for your approval that would go back and let the project get underway, hopefully starting tomorrow, the next day.
Okay. You heard a recommendation from the city manager and the staff. That is, it's at your seat. You should have that in front of you for the water treatment plant upgrade, Phase 2 project ordinance. Is there any discussion or question on this? Not, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion from Councilmember Thomas to approve this plant upgrade, Phase 2 project ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Okay. We talked about it a few minutes ago. Would like to mention as we move on before the Black History Month events, there's several of those, we have a flyer on that. But quickly, on Saturday, February 3rd, there'll be a jazz show. These are at the Martin Luther King Center, by the way, all those. On Sunday, February 4th, there's a worship service featuring the Mount Calvary Baptist Men's Choir with the heavenly horns singing there. Saturday, February 10th, there'll be a movie night, Marshall, at the center. On Tuesday, February 13th, there'll be a Martin Luther King Blood Drive and donors will be placed in a drawing to win tickets to the Temptations Review featuring Bo Henderson at the Royal Civic Center on February 15th. On Thursday, February 22nd, there is a Quiz Bowl Essay Contest at the center. And on Saturday, February 24th, the Joni Slub Fashion Show will kind of be a kickoff the end of the Black History Month event. So please check those out and if you get a chance, go to...
We'll post that on our website.
Yeah, this will be on the city's website and I know there are flyers we placed all over in our appropriate areas on that, so.
And I just wanted to quickly mention, as both a movie fan and an attorney, I've heard really good things about the movie Marshall, which is about Thurgood Marshall who argued Brown versus Board of Education and served for a long time on the U.S. Supreme Court and was a strong defender of individual and civil rights. He's one of my heroes, so.
Good.
I haven't seen that yet, but I look forward to seeing it.
We guarantee you, you'll have a seat in the facility.
You guarantee it. Even if it's full, you'll pick somebody up for me.
We'll get you a seat. I'll give you my seat.
Okay, fair enough.
Good, well that'll be, sounds like a good thing to see then, so we're glad to hear that. Okay, any report from recommendations? Our city attorney, Mr. Blair?
No, sir.
Okay. I do have some appointments and there's a list of those in front of you, should be, for the city, or on your tablet, for the, these are just city board appointments for the Lenore Business Advisory Board, Recreation Advisory Board, City-City Coordinating, and then representatives to the Western Piedmont Council Governments, City-City Services Committee and the Metropolitan Planning Organization and the Railroad Commission. Pretty much very little change. Did add Councilmember Beal to the, wanted him to have some experience with the Business Advisory Board. And I think it'd be a good learning process for him to be a part of that as an, we're all only ex-officio members anyway of these boards and you're always welcome to attend as long as we don't have a quorum there, we can attend most of these meetings anyway. And you're always free to attend a lot of our board meetings when you have the opportunity. Just make sure that we don't have too many out there at any one time. So if those, we'll present this to you if you, my recommendation to you.
Do we need to act upon that?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that all the board appointments be approved as presented.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stevens makes a motion to approve the board appointments as presented. Any other discussion?
Anybody that wants to be on the Metropolitan Planning Organization, I would be happy to introduce you to that committee if you would like to be on that in the future.
Sounds like something perfect for our new council member.
The problem with it is, it's been a problem with me, is it's during the day and it pulls you away in the middle of the day. But it is a really good committee to be on because that's where a lot of the DOT projects come through. All the DOT projects come through, through the county and we represent the city and it's good to kind of have a heads up of what's going on, so. It's not about...
We'll maybe get you a substitute guy too to be a backup alternate.
That would be great.
Okay. I'll talk to him a little later about that. Okay, good. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to present this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Okay, we do have a couple of other appointments. Real quickly, this is for the Fireman's Relief Fund. Fire Chief Ken Briscoe is recommending that Donna Bean, our Finance Director, and Scott Powell, Battalion Chief, be appointed to serve on the Fireman's Relief Fund Board. Chief, anything you want to add to that? Kind of let us know. I know we know what it is, but just so that everyone in the public does have an opportunity to know.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity. This is set up, they used to, it's called a gross premium tax now, but it was called the one-half of 1% fund. There are close to 1,500 fire departments in the state of North Carolina and for every fire and lightning insurance that's sold in those fire districts, that fire department gets one-half of 1% of all fire and lightning insurance sold in the district. So from that money, it's created back in the 50s, I would say, 40s or 50s, because the read it was money to keep a firefighter out of the alm's house. So, that tells you how old it is. But it's a five-person board, and in the past, it's been primarily done with the fire department. We approached this council about eight years ago and asked you that we could use Mr. Danny Gilbert, or we would recommend Mr. Gilbert, because it is quite a bit of money that comes in to the Fireman's Relief Fund, and it can only be used for certain areas, and investments have to be made. And with Mr. Gilbert leaving the city and with Ms. Donna coming on, we felt like with her background and her knowledge of not only financing, but also the fire service, that she would be a great person to put on the board. Chief Powell will be replacing Chief Rod Warren. Many of you know Rod Warren. He passed away this year or last year. Chief Warren had been on the board ever since its inception. Chief Powell will be an excellent addition to the board, and so we recommend both of those for the Relief Fund Board, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Any idea when they're gonna change it to the Firefighters Relief Fund Board?
You know, I don't know if it's actually...
They ought to.
They should. They should, because there's a couple of things, just for your general knowledge, that they use it for. We can't use it to pay anybody or to buy turnout gear or fire trucks or anything, but we can use it to help pay for their insurance or their education in the City of Lenore. What we actually do with it is the money is invested for firefighters that have retired from the City of Lenore with 20-year service, a minimum of 20 years' service, and at least 60 years' old. Then, they get a check every month for $60 a month. Now, that doesn't sound like a whole lot of money or a whole lot, but we've got 43 firefighters that have retired from the City of Lenore, and so that's a pretty big responsibility, and that's why we feel like that Ms. Donna will do a great job looking after that force. So, it should be a relief, Firefighters Relief Fund.
Thank you, Chief. You've heard the recommendation for these appointments. I'll entertain a motion for that.
Motion to accept.
Have a motion from Councilmember Beal that we accept the appointments as presented for the Fireman's Relief Fund at this point, firefighter maybe in the future. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you very much. Sounds as approved unanimously. One other thing I will add, we have the coming up in our next council meeting, actually before that, the Colwell County...Colwell Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner is on the same night as our council meeting, so we are asking maybe to move this to five...our meeting to 5:00 so that we can attend.
When?
On February 6th. That'd be our next meeting. That's the annual dinner. It's the L.A. Dyser Awards.
We're supposed to take pictures that day, too. Can we change the picture?
Yeah, we're supposed to be here at 5:15 for pictures.
Yeah.
Yeah. We will need to be here earlier if you can, about 4:30, maybe 4:15.
Yeah, for the picture.
Bring sleeping bags or something.
Yeah, bring a sleeping bag and come on over. But we will...that is that night. That is the Chamber's annual dinner, and we all certainly are invited, so if you need to...but we need to let Shirley know if you plan to attend that just as soon as you can, so she can make reservations for all of us who plan to attend that dinner. That is for the annual L.A. Dyser Man and Woman of the Year Awards and Chamber Awards and other things, I guess they'll be doing that night at the J.E. Broughill Center. Okay. Anything else from the council members? Anything to come before? Want to talk about the...
Just want to speak a little on the activities over the weekend. I would say Roger, the President of NWA CP, and we've got Michael here to say that we had a great turnout of events. It seems like the events have grown over previous years, and I think adding the Program on Sunday was a great success, and thank goodness for technology. For those who couldn't attend, you could...most everything was streamed. I want to thank all the city staff and fire and police, everybody that participated, the recreation boards, but it was just a great time to recognize Martin Luther King, the 50th anniversary, and I mean, we had a lot of young kids that came out for the march, and we just look forward to...we continue the mission of, you know, doing something for other service. Didn't stop yesterday. It continues on today, and we were challenged with that. So, a lot to be proud of, but I was just...wanted to take a moment, and Councilmember Perkins can speak to it also. He was there for all the events, eating dessert.
He ate two breakfasts. I saw it.
Just again, I think the breakfast, to me, was the high...well, not the highlight, but one of the great events, because a lot of people turned out, and we got to sell a lot of tickets, and a lot of people were involved. So, I again say thank you for the city staff, the recreation lesson office people, and for the council for its being there as well. So, this has been a great weekend. I mean, we had a whole weekend. I think it's the first time we've had the church service, but that was good, too. That was an internom... interracial, interdenominational service on Sunday, and that was great. So, all of the events have been good. So, again, thank you.
Okay. Any other council members?
Yeah, it sounds like school's canceled for tomorrow. Someone just got notices on our phones.
School is canceled for tomorrow.
Congratulations.
Get snow boots out.
I would rather go to school.
That's not official. I just got a phone call, and I didn't get the text, so don't rely on me, members of the public, but I think...
Did you make the call?
You made the call.
It was my call.
Okay.
If it's not true, it's Rohr. R-A-R-O-H-R.
Really?
Rohr. R-O-A-R. That's Rohr, too. I would like...last thing I'd like to mention is, this past week, several council members, myself and Mr. Hildebrand, attended the Essentials of Municipal Government class in Hickory. It went very well. Councilmember Beal, Councilmember Perkins, Councilmember Stevens, and Councilmember Thomas were all there. It was great. I know it was for Councilmember Beal. He got a chance first time to be a part of the Essentials course, which is really good for new council members coming on, and we had a veterans course that we took during the same time, so it worked out really well. So, appreciate everyone being a part of it.
Councilmember Beal told me he'd mastered the job already.
No, no, no.
I understand.
He's now ethical and knows all the ins and outs, so...
Anything else to come before this council tonight?
Not even close.
If not, we stand adjourned.